I call the May 21st, 2019 Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
I would make a motion of consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $197,064. Manual checks in the amount of $68,897.37. Payroll and liabilities for May 10th, 2019 in the amount of $204,577.22. For a total of $470,475.23.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions on the claims?
None here.
No, I don't have any.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote aye, motion passes. Any other business?
No, Your Honor.
Way over there.
I have none, Your Honor.
Were you here when we started?
I wasn't, I was working.
And people still do that, huh?
I lost track of time, I apologize.
All right, then, we are adjourned at 6:46 PM.
Councilmember Carla Borders, lead us in the pledge, please.
Absolutely.
And afterwards, would Councilmember Larson give us the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, as we begin this council meeting, we ask Thy blessings be upon us that we might do our very best for the citizens of Riverton. We would ask that Thou would bless us with insight, understanding, and patience. Humbly we ask this, in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thanks Kyle and Carla for doing those. I should have mentioned those before we started. I appreciate that. Would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Present.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Present.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
I declare Quorme is present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Borders and a second by Councilmember Schatz. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item which is already on the agenda will be given the opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Ryan Preston, Riverton Chamber of Commerce. So, I'm here today to ask you guys to allow us to amend our open container permit at the alive at five from this Friday to next Friday because of certain weather circumstances that are kind of putting a hindrance on our ability to do anything.
You think you need grass?
I think we'd not like rain or snow.
It's looking pretty rainy out there, but yes.
So, we've had communication with the splash pad. I know that they've already planned on moving it as well, so, you know, in conjunction with what we're trying to do, it's, you know, I feel it's in our best interest.
Have all the entertainment and everything moved to the next?
Well, the only issue that we're working on right now is the band, so, but I've been in contact with another band that is willing to step in and place in an interim that we can't get the band out of Montana.
Super.
I'd move that we allow him, allow the permit that's already been granted for the Chamber of Commerce to move the date of their event to March 31st.
March?
May 31st.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Hancock that's kind of, we're going to do it in May 31st, correct?
That's better than March.
Okay, and then the second was from Councilmember Schatz. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, May 7th, 2019, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 7th, 2019, executive session. Approval of the minutes, May 14th, 2019, special council meeting. Approval of the minutes, May 21st, 2019, Finance Committee meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for May 21st, 2019. An approval of the Municipal Court report for the month of April, 2019. An ordinance number 19-006 on second reading, and I'll read that by title only. An ordinance amending Title VI Animals to revise Chapter 6.04 Animals Generally to establish Section 6.04.090 Supplemental Feeding of Certain Wild Animals and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date. Park Place subdivision plat from the petitioner Riverton Park Place LLC. And Ryan Heights addition replat number five from Seventh and Fremont Apartments LLC.
Are there any further items, are there any items for further discussion?
Your Honor.
Please.
The recommendations from the Finance Committee was for bills to be paid in the amount of $197,064. Manual checks in the amount of $68,897.37. Payroll liabilities for May 10th, 2019 in the amount of $204,577.22. For a total of $470,475.23.
Thank you.
In Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Bailey and a second from Councilman Larson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Appointment of the Community Enhancement Committee members, City Council, or City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 1388 was approved on April 2nd of 2019. This formally created the Community Engagement Committee, which is essentially the redevelopment of the Parks Committee that was, had, that we had previously. Staff advertised for the vacancy, and we also put it on Facebook a fair amount, a fair amount to try to get some interest. At this point, following the advertisements, we accepted letters of interest. Those letters of interest have been provided for you. Currently, in addition to the letters, council is needing to provide for two appointments to that. These are mayoral appointments, both for the membership and the council. So, in addition to those letters, the recommended appointments are Rebecca Schatz and Corey Rota. At this point, there's no immediate impact to the budget for this, but it is expected that this group will probably be pretty active, so we'll have budget conversations later. With that being said, staff recommends approval of the mayor's appointments to the Community Engagement Committee as presented.
Do you want to name those off?
Yes, Your Honor. The proposed mayoral appointments for the committee are Mary Axelm, Casey Bailey, Bethany Baldez, Kayla Brown, Amanda Daniel, Cameron Ferring, and Rusty Wertz.
Thank you. We had one other letter from Mayor Warpness, which I appreciated getting. Mayor Warpness is always willing to serve, and I appreciate that very much. It makes a better committee if we have an odd number in case we tie. We would never do that, would we? So, is there any, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the mayor appointments to the Engagement Committee.
So moved.
Any further discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I guess I...
Come on.
I appreciate, I appreciate what you're saying about having to tie, I just, I was very surprised when we had Mayor Warpness, who was willing to serve the community and continues to in different capacities. And we had eight slots that were available, we received eight letters, and so, I mean, I could understand if this were something like the Force Committee or something, where we're going to be having votes, where we're going to have the danger of tying and making sure that we have a clear recommendation to council. But it just seemed too bad to me to not take advantage of somebody who's got time and is willing to serve the council. So, and I understand this is your appointment. The only thing we could do is say we're not going to approve it at all, which I don't think makes sense, but that was just my thought of it when I was reading it.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor, I think it's short-sighted not to use the best people you have for the job, especially when you're not paying them anything. Mayor Warpness, and I differ in a lot of ways, but Mayor Warpness's only intent is to make Riverton better. He has given a lot of time and effort to the community. He's gone beyond. He continues to strive after his office is fulfilled honorably to make Riverton the best he possibly can, and to not use him, I think is short-sighted. And I feel cheated that we can't use that gifted individual in especially such a gem as our park to bring about its fullest development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm just wondering if there would be a possibility of having an alternate that could still attend the meetings and take part? If that would be a possibility?
Anything else?
That's it.
Anybody else? Mayor Warpness is extremely active in the community. He sits on the Force Committee, and he attends the Solutions Committee. Mayor, would you like to address us?
It wasn't my intent to create, you know, controversy or anything like that. When the opportunity arose to continue to serve the community, it's just an offer. And that's all I want to do is just, if I have anything to offer to the community that I can give help, then I certainly want to do that. And what I've heard here is very humbling, and so I, but I would be happy to serve in any way that I can.
Thank you, Mayor. With that said, I was trying to keep one person per committee, but since you guys don't think that that's what you want, I'd love to have Mayor Warpness around me anytime I can have him. So, let's add him to the list. Do we need to, can we do that? Would you need a motion to do that?
Your Honor, I believe in you saying to add him to the list, council would just amend their motion to approve the list with the addition of Mayor Warpness.
Would you do that, Councilman, or, I think Carla, you had the motion?
Yes, it was me. And I do make that motion to add Mayor Warpness to...
It's an amendment to the motion?
Amend the motion.
And Mike? You're right. So, is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award for the 2007 Chevy van. City Administrator's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city previously received two requests pertaining to the disposal of the Chevy van currently owned by the city of Riverton. Council considered the request at the April 16th, 2019, regular council meeting and directed staff to dispose of the van pursuant to Wyoming State Statute. The city advertised the item as surplus property and accepted bids until the 16th. At this time, we, at that time, we had received three bids. Those were sealed bids and were opened in the Clerk's office at following the deadline. Those bids came from Yates Construction in the amount of $11,000, QuickSpace Storage in the amount of $8,200, and Foray Road Forward LLC in the amount of $13,088. Staff recommends that council accept the bid from Foray Road Forward LLC and direct staff to execute unnecessary paperwork as that is the highest conforming bid.
Your Honor, I'll abstain from this item on the agenda.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to award the purchase of the 2007 Chevy Express van to Foray Road For, Foray Road Forward LLC for the amount of $13,088.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Larson and a second by Councilmember Schatz. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are at item 11, public hearing for ordinance number 19005 and 19007. City Clerk, report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you tonight for your consideration on first reading are two ordinances. The first is ordinance number 19-005, which relates to the Riverton Municipal Code, Section 5.04.220, and provides for written procedures for the licensee, staff, and licensing authority to follow in the event of a liquor code violation. And then ordinance number 19-007 proposes revisions to Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04, which is our alcoholic beverages chapter, which relates to the code changes that need to be made pursuant to the 2019 legislative session. Now, these two ordinances were discussed in detail at the May 14th Special Council meeting, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask that those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the records.
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move to close public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Larson, a second by Councilmember Schatz. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Consideration of the ordinance number 19005, first, on first reading, RMC, Chapter 5.04 revision. Would the City Clerk please read the ordinance number 15005 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 19-005 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title V Business Licenses and Regulations to revise Chapter 5.04 Alcoholic Beverages. Section 5.04.220 Revocation of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 19.005 on first reading.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Rota and a second by Councilman Border. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of ordinance number 19007, first reading, RMC, Chapter 5.04 Legislative Revision. Would the City Clerk please read the ordinance number 19.007 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed, proposed ordinance number 19-007 on first reading. An ordinance amending Title V Business Licenses and Regulations to revise Chapter 5.04 Alcoholic Beverages. Sections 5.04.100, Permit for Retail Sales at Pybnics, Bazaars, Fairs, etc. 5.04.230, Issuance of Liquor Licenses by Category. And 5.04.270, Issuance by Classes of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-00 on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve ordinance 19-007.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilman Hancock. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Resolution number 1319, Approval of the 911 Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement. City Clerk's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you tonight for your consideration is Resolution number 1390, which authorizes staff to enter into a lease purchase agreement with Motorola Solutions for the new 911 system that we're required to, that we need to upgrade. Pursuant to the discussion that was had at the May 14th Special Council meeting, staff presented the history of our current 911 system and defined the necessity for the upgrade in conjunction with the county's dispatch center. So, in order to proceed forward with the lease agreement, a resolution is required as approval from the governing body to begin that process.
Would the City Clerk please read Resolution number 1319 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution number 1390, A Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Riverton Supporting the 911 Equipment Lease Purchase Agreement with Motorola Solutions.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1390.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Rota and a second by Councilmember Bailey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are smoking. The transfer of entitlement funds to Laramie Regional Airport. Would the Public Works Director give us a report, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. This request is similar to the request that the City Council heard in 2017 when we transferred entitlement funds to Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport. Essentially, through the AIP program, the city of Riverton and Riverton Regional Airport receives entitlement funds, or funds that come from the federal government to help support capital improvement projects that the... capital improvement projects at the airport. These funds don't come in a direct distribution of cash, rather it comes as an entitlement that we can then draw against when we have significant projects. The measuring factor for these funds is our threshold of employments, and we've talked about this. The threshold is 10,000, so I hope I'm not repeating things that we've talked about in the past. But with the 10,000 threshold, we haven't met that in several years. However, thanks to the congressional help that we've had on the Hill, we've received entitlement funds to the tune of $1 million even after 2013 when it was the last time we hit the 10,000 employment threshold. As we've worked through our capital improvement plan and the projects, we have found that there are years when we do not have a significant need for the entitlement funds or the funds we have a right to request from the federal government. The FAA allows us to transfer those funds to another airport as they are working through a significant capital improvement project. And then when that project is completed, they transfer the funds back to us when we have need of them. So this agreement that's coming before you is from the FAA. They're requesting our authorization to transfer entitlement funds that we have banked up with the FAA to Laramie County Airport so that they can complete a significant project in the next two fiscal years. There is no budget impact to us and there is no risk to us as far as a need to have these funds available for capital projects that we have underway right now or will have underway in the future. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council approves an agreement with the FAA to transfer the right to our entitlement funds to Laramie County Airport so they can complete a project in the next couple of fiscal years, and then those funds will be made available to us again in the future. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the transfer of entitlements from the FFA.
Your Honor, I move that we transfer funds to the Laramie County Airport.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion?
Honor. I think what actually needs to happen is we have to authorize the Public Works Director to execute the agreement. We're not actually moving money, so to speak. So I just move we amend the motion to authorize the Public Works Director to execute the agreement for the transfer of entitlements with the FAA.
That's off the script. What do you guys want? We run in the.
The approval of the amendment will, will be sufficient, Your Honor. The second one where the Public Works Director is authorized.
Okay. So now we have, we do have a motion from Councilman Hancock. Restate your motion.
That we amend the transfer so that it's clear that the city council is authorizing the Public Works Director to execute the agreement for transfer of entitlements with the FAA. It's just the language from the recommendation on the staff report, Your Honor.
And the second is from Councilman Schatz. Any further discussion? We okay? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are now at 14. Council committee reports. Councilman Hancock, why don't you start us off?
Sure. Had the opportunity to attend the Solutions Committee meeting. We had a good meeting. We're trying to come up with basically getting together what we've been able to accomplish and what we plan to accomplish in the future. I think we had a lot of discussion about something that I was wanting to propose that the Solutions Committee get behind, and that is, you know, we've had a lot of grassroots kind of things lately with the splash pad, with the skate park, we've got the Riverton Medical District, a lot of different things where citizens are seeing things they need in their community. And I was proposing to the Solutions Committee that we could really get behind a residential treatment facility for our alcoholic and addicted folks that live here. I don't know exactly what it would take. I don't know how many years it would take, but I can tell you in my experience, we have multiple people that are in need in Riverton for residential inpatient treatment. We have treatment facilities throughout the state, Sheridan, Casper, Cheyenne, Rock Springs. Each of those places are really, what happens is when somebody needs to get inpatient treatment, they're usually placed on a waiting list. And while they're waiting, often they're waiting in our jail. When I say our jail, the county's jail. And so that turns into a cost for the city when we have folks that are waiting for inpatient treatment and we're paying for them to sit in jail for a good amount of time. It results in costs to the county because we have people that are usually court ordered to go to residential treatment, but they are on a waiting list and it's sometimes for months. I think really when it comes down to it, Riverton has a need just as much or more than many of the other communities that have a residential treatment facility. And so I really think of all the things that we can do when we're talking about how we can solve the addiction problems that we face here, the drug problems, the alcohol problems that we have here, having a facility like that, I think, would be a boon. And I don't know exactly how that would work. I've been trying to look into it a little bit, but anyway, it's something that I'm wanting to work towards, and I think it's something that when you think about ways we can make, find solutions, that's definitely right at the top of the list. So, other than that, the other thing I wanted to bring up, I had a good friend of mine today who, not today, this was last week, who asked me, do we have any sort of Citizen of the Year Award or anything like that from Riverton? Because he wanted to nominate a good friend of his who's retiring from the line of business that he's in. And so I got ahold of Mr. Tolstead and I said, I've never heard that we have anything like that. I know that, for example, the Chamber has a Volunteer of the Year. We have other organizations that, that recognize people in their organizations, but up until now, I'm not aware of any way that the city council or the city has recognized some of the outstanding people that we have in our community that are doing things all the time that really help the community. It doesn't necessarily, I think, have to be a volunteer, so to speak, although we could go that route. But I just throw that out there as something that maybe we could look into, something that I think could be an exciting way that we could do something we've been talking about with our goals, which is focus on a lot of these positive things that are going on in Riverton and try to recognize people that are working towards that. So something just to throw out there for the rest of the council to consider, for staff. I think it could be a novel idea. I don't think we'd have to just have Citizen of the Year. We could have different things rather than just one. Could have different categories, so to speak, but I think it would be something that would be an exciting possibility. So food for thought, I guess.
Mike, you have anything to add?
The Force Committee got canceled this month because I think they've, they've got work ongoing on the Gannett Drive project, and so I don't think they had a lot on their agenda right, right at this point. So they're, they're working on the Gannett Engineering and all that kind of stuff, so we'll try to have, you know, that ready to go to bid by early next spring. And I did attend the airport board meeting, which they had a presentation from the Riverton Food Hub Group, which they're looking at possibly being able to rent the airport cafe and use that for sort of a test kitchen, possible food production area, that kind of stuff. And so that's just in its infancy, but they're working on that. They've got some really great ideas. And again, the, the local food movement between the farmer's market that they have in the park and, and some of those kind of things, there's, there's really a, some neat stuff going on there with the locally grown and produced food items that we're going to have in the community. So I think that's sort of a neat thing that's going on, and hopefully we, maybe we can get some use out of that kitchen up there and do some cool stuff. They want to use it sort of as an incubator to possibly, you know, food type businesses getting started, and, and this would give them a low-cost way to get in and test their theories and business plans and all that kind of stuff. So that was really exciting. Again, the airport just keeps improving, you know. It's exciting, the things where we've come in the last three or four years, I think it's, it's just amazing. Again, I had to, I apologize for being gone this month for a couple of meetings, but I did fly Denver Air Connections every time when I was leaving and coming, so. And they, of course, gave fabulous service as they always have, and it's, it's a great service that we have in the community. It really, after a long trip, going and coming from wherever you're going, it's nice to land in Riverton and five minutes later you're in your home, as opposed to driving two hours from Jackson or Casper or somewhere else like that. So I really appreciate having that service available to us, so. I really like what Tim's talking about with the treatment center here. We have had some conversations in the past with the VOA group, you know, and that's sort of what they do. And so, so I think that's something we really should pursue. I think, you know, if we can turn some lives around and get them on the right path, that's a lot better than just keep throwing people in jail and spending a bunch of money doing that that accomplishes basically nothing. And they don't have a lack of customers at the jail, so I don't think they're going to worry about that too much, so. And I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Mike. Rebecca, what do you have for us?
Yes, Your Honor. First, I want to thank the city staff, Tony and Kyle especially, for all the flexibility that you guys have had over the last 24 hours with the Splash Pad grand opening and the sod laying. So I just want to say real quick, make an announcement, that the Splash Pad grand opening has been moved till next Friday, May 31st, due to the inclement weather, as well as the postponing of the laying the sod. So next Wednesday, we will be laying sod, and we need as many volunteers as we can get. So if you know of any group in town, any organization, churches, individuals, whoever is available, 9:00 AM next Wednesday to lay sod for the grand opening of the Splash Pad. I also want to give a shout out to our artists, Rusty Wertz, Tacey Moore, and Patrick Cosner, painting that mural in City Park. If you have not drove by that intersection, please do so. It is looking amazing. And just so you guys know, this is all volunteer. They're doing this out of their kindness of their heart, so. And it's been a lot of work. They've been out there, every, they work full-time jobs, and they're out there every evening, on the weekends, in the freezing cold, rain, snow, everything else, making that mural happen, so I'm really impressed with that. PAWS Board meeting was this evening. I went, but the door was locked, so I came here. They are doing, I know. They're doing a few fundraisers here in the near future. The most, one coming up is the Roasted Bean on May 29th. Go have dinner there. Proceeds will, part of the proceeds will go to the PAWS Shelter, and they also have a list on their Facebook page of items that you can donate to the shelter. The next one is June 6th, June 6th, that Pizza Hut. 20% of the sales using that coupon goes towards the PAWS Shelter. And then the Claws for Paws on June 22nd in Sunset Park. It's a crawfish boil. Again, all proceeds go to the PAWS Board. Congratulations to all those selected for the Community Engagement Committee. We are really looking forward to doing that. I know we already have some things on the agenda that we've been talking about offline that we're really looking forward to. And then the last thing that I have is the Kickin' Trash Movement. We actually have a Facebook page now, so if you want to know where we're headed or where we're going or where we've been, check out the Kickin' Trash in Riverton Facebook page. Our next event will be tomorrow, actually, at 4:00 PM at Veterans Park. So if you just park your vehicle here at Veterans Park, we're going to make our way up the rails to Trails. This was actually our first cleanup, but it's already looking like it needs some assistance over there, so we're doing that again. If anybody in the community has an idea for a good date and time that they want to clean up or location, just let me know, and I can at least coordinate it for you if I can't attend, and we can find out ways to get bags and all that kind of stuff, and we could post it for the community to be involved. And then I think that's about it. And then I was also thinking with your idea, Tim, do it quarterly instead of a Citizen of the Year, do it every quarter, and then at the end of the year, we can do a Citizen of the Year, but that's what we did in the military. We had like Marine of the Quarter, and it really does give the incentive to get out there and volunteer and do better, so. That's it.
Thank you. Kyle?
When, when is they, when are they putting sod down?
Wednesday, next Wednesday, not tomorrow, but the following Wednesday.
So that's the 29th at City Park?
If you're looking at the calendar, then yes, it is the 29th at City Park. Next Wednesday, 9:00 AM.
Well, I'm just, you know, you need, laying sod goes quick when you have a lot of people.
I hope so.
Greenside Up, I think.
Greenside Up.
Hopefully the professionals will be there to help us out.
Greenside Up. Last night, I went up to the Manita Divide Water Permitting Presentation, and it was most, if anybody's ever dealt with the EPA on a discharge permit, it is a most entertaining, if you will, point of time. You just don't take the water down and have it analyzed. You have to take samples appropriately, and then you provide them to a, to a lab where they, they put special species in the water to see if they will live a certain period of time. Sarodaphny is one, and some small guppy is another. And when I did that, he said last night that their water was too pure. And so you start thinking, too pure? How can that be? And I've watched fish die so quick in your real pure water that it's unbelievable, so it's possible. And so in listening to that presentation, they estimated a total possible nine million gallons per day, and I think Kyle has told us that we process 2 million, 3 million?
Four.
4 million on a daily basis, so they would be substantially higher, but they are roughly 50 miles, 45 plus, from the discharge point, which is voice and length. But you have to remember that this water is, is better at its worst time than the water that Thermopolis is discharging every day, every day. And there is no permit on that hot springs for some reason. I haven't figured out why the government hasn't come in and decided to require somebody to be permitted on that solid water. Anyway, so.
Who would discharge?
There were a lot of naysayers on that about salt pits and all kinds of brine problems, but the real important part that we've got to remember is we're upstream. Thermopolis should be concerned, but not us. We're upstream, but the jobs would come from Riverton. And 4,000 wells is a lot of jobs. And when you have 4,000 wells, you're also going to have a sweetener plant and a treatment plant, and that's all around-the-clock employment. And because if there's a sweetener plant in there, you're going to have trucking because they don't sell propane or butane or heptane. They truck it. So you've got to realize how important a development like that is to Fremont County and to our specific area. Thank you.
Councilman Rhoda.
Mr. Mayor, Becca kind of got one of the things I wanted to mention was the Kickin' Trash Facebook page, so if anybody has any recommendations for where they'd like to see cleaned up, go to that. The big thing I wanted to talk about is the Riverton Middle School has a Community Improvement Association, and tomorrow at 8:30, 10:15, and 1:30, they're going to put on a little program where they talk about some of the ideas that they've come up with to improve Riverton, and I believe they're going to open the floor for anybody else to come in and say any words that they would like to see that could help Riverton. One thing that they've already began is they are collecting canned foods, youth sporting clothes, socks, shoes, blankets, and any hygiene products for the rest of the school year at the middle school. But I want to encourage everybody to go to one of those meetings. It's at 8:30, 10:15, and 1:30. They're only supposed to last about 45 minutes is their estimate. They've got some kids I've been working and talking with, and they've got some really great ideas on things we can do in Riverton to keep the momentum going, and I, as a firm believer that you have to start with the kids, I think we should really get on board and show them as much support as we can and let them know that, you know, what they're doing is, is huge and it's a great thing. So I just wanted to encourage everybody to attend that if, if possible, and that is all I have at the moment, Mr. Mayor. I have at the moment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla?
Well, Tim kind of told everybody about the Solutions Committee. I'm really excited. I think this residential treatment center is way past due. I think we've got a lot of, a lot of our people that need help, and being on a waiting list is not helpful as far as recovery, so I'm looking forward to that. The other thing, I've been working with the Riverton Local Food Hub, and we've been meeting every other week, and it's really exciting. I got to attend that meeting on Friday, and Jack, who's kind of our ringleader right now, is just, he's very dynamic. He's really, he's very passionate about this. So, I wanted to mention the, hold on just a second. Okay, so, we have a Facebook page. It's called Riverton Food Hub, Riverton Local Food Hub. And then, we've also got a webpage, rivertonlocalfoodhub.com. One of the things that we want to do to get things started is we want to have a membership. And for 50 bucks, you can join. You can help support this cause and help us get off the ground, and I think it's going to be a really neat thing for people. So, that's about all I have for tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to do this right.
You're going to speak up?
No. City administrators report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick items. RECDA will be tomorrow morning at the Sundowner, and Public Works Director Kyle Butterfield will be one of the two presenters on transportation within our community, giving a little bit of an update on air service in our community. So, we will be in attendance, and all are welcome to that if they like. The Solutions Committee will meet again this Thursday evening. I think you're hearing a presentation at that time as well from one of the middle schoolers, and that agenda will be going out pretty soon. The city offices are closed Monday, obviously, in observance of Memorial Day. So, we wanted to make sure everybody knows we'll be back and running again on Tuesday morning, but we won't be open on Monday. You'll notice that your agenda this time around is different than it was the last time. We had been trying the, we had been testing the software package or the software program that you had been using. It turned out that it just really wasn't efficient for us internally. We were being, there were some redundant steps we kept having to take. It wasn't the efficiency we wanted. However, if you'll look at your existing one, you'll note in the email that sent it out, you can click on any one of those items, and it takes you immediately to that particular page. And this is something that Megan and Kristen and the rest of the staff put together, and they did a great job on it. So, we're going to be testing this out. This is an internal item that we're not paying, paying for, obviously, because it's not a separate program. Our technology allows it to do, us to do that now. So, thank you very much to them for their good work. We'll be, we'll continue to look at these different things over time, but right now, this is the one we're going to be testing for a little bit, and we appreciate your patience and any feedback you have on that. Thank you. The last item would just be with regard to the Manita Divide Project. The public comment period for these, I've also, like Councilman Larson, I've had the ability to be involved in some of these permitting processes in the past, and this one is kind of nice because you can actually submit comments online, and that is provided through the DEQ website for the permit. So, individuals, sometimes we talk about not being able to make a meeting, or I can't get here, or something happened, but I do have something to say, or I have good information. That can be submitted online now. So, we wanted to remind people that, and that is being accepted through July 5th. With that, Your Honor, I have no additional items, other than to say we will look into the, continue to have conversations about the regional facility, and we will try to bring some lists and ideas for your community recognition.
Thank you. We have had, I've had conversations with both Chaney's office and Enzi's office for a treatment center using federal funds on the reservation, and they have called me back and told me that that money they believe is available, and that they will do their very best to look into that. I'm glad you two guys can make it to Solutions this time. I appreciate that. So, there is some work being done by our legislative side to see if we couldn't get a treatment center in Fremont County. We did meet with the Wyoming Business Council, and we had a bus tour in the afternoon, and I got to sit by the mayor's wife of Kimmer, and she commenced to tell me about this wonderful new program that's out there, that we're going to be able to join the state's insurance pool. And I listened to her for a while. Her husband was so excited, being the mayor of Kimmer, it was going to be a great savings of dollars to Kimmer. And I said, you know, our city clerk, Kristen Watson, was the real spearhead on that, and she's been pushing that really hard. And she said, you know, you're right. Now that you mentioned that name, it was in the article. Now, I don't read the Casper paper for a number of reasons. I probably should have that, that issue, but I thought it was really fun to see where the good works that our people are doing in Riverton are coming around to benefit us all. And Kristen, you need to be commended for your hard effort there and for your pushing. Maybe that works. Maybe it saves us a bunch of money. We do appreciate your efforts, so you need to be, need to be recognized for that. That tour took us all over town. We went out to the Shoshone Business Park, had a great presentation there. Then we went to City Park, and I later said to the police chief, I don't know who arranged for that baseball game over in the corner, but I really appreciated it. It was midday, and we had a bunch of youth that were over playing baseball in the old Major League Baseball diamond that many of us can remember. And the park was peaceful and calm, and we had the balloon basket set up, and it was, it was shooting fire, and I had a lady from Casper on the tour, and the business council came to me at that location and said, you know, I really couldn't believe, she said, I looked through all of the information that I'd been given, the price that Fremont County is paying for health care. And we went on to have a long discussion, and that's the field she's in, and she was very informative, and I appreciate her response. Thursday morning, that same council was in town, and Tony told me that the dress was casual on Wednesday, and it was. And then, when I got to the Holiday Inn for the morning meeting, I thought we were going to prom. And fortunately, I had put a tie on, but it was a pretty jazzy arrangement, and they showed a short film of Riverton successes that included Pertec, included Legacy Molding, included Brunton, included County 10. Whom else am I missing?
Air Service, Your Honor.
What's that?
Air Service.
Air Service, yeah. And it was, it was a wonderful presentation. We ought to get our hands on that and show it on our own board. And Kyle was on there. He was a star, and we had lots of stars on that, and we really, we really need to sell our positives and our pluses. I appreciate that. So, it was really well put together, and we didn't embarrass ourselves. I think they were really impressed with the city of Riverton. They, they looked around, and we showed them all of the, all the places that they'd helped fund. We took them up to, when we left the city park, we went up to the Smith Parking Lot, where we showed them the Alco Building, that they, that money that they had helped us with refurbished that building. I also had a inquiry that we talked to a company that is looking to bring 25 more employees that might be willing to use that other half of that building this last week. I met with ID Inc. and them, and Tony was with us. We went from that location up to the Brunton Building. Those of us that were in attendance got a compass. Bobby, you could, you might know where you were if you got a compass. So, from there, we went up to Job Corps, and we spent all of our time touring Job Corps, and we didn't get to go to the Airport Industrial Park, but we pointed our way that direction on our way out. So, it was a really, really good meeting, and those, those are some shakers and bakers, and they, they really fund the state, and we got to get across to them how important they are and how much help we need, and we could use those funds that they're, that they have. Chief was kind enough to ride with me to Lander to shoplifting and opioid presentation in Lander, which I learned a lot from. It wasn't that well-attended. I would like to put out the notice that tomorrow night in these chambers at 6:00, we're going to have that same discussion. And I would appreciate everybody come down. We're going to finish up on shoplifting, if we have any other questions on shoplifting, and then go on to what we can do to help with that opioid addiction problem that we have. They have some experts lined up to speak to us, and they were quite informative, and I think we have some problems that we can probably fix. I also attended the airport meeting and listened to the Hub, Food Hub Presentation. That's a great idea. I think that was Mayor Wartness's idea for that membership drive. Makes, makes good sense. We also attended FAST right after that. Our FAST Committee never gets enough credit. If it wasn't for our FAST Committee, we would be in real trouble with, with our airport. And the beauty of our FAST Committee is they've been asked to be on the state's selection of the new airport programs. And so, from there, we have great connection, and a lot of things are happening there. We're now on Expedia, Travelocity, Cheap Air. Was there one other?
I think that covers it.
And so, no longer is Riverton Airport dark. You can get on those, on those sites yourself and, and make your ticket right back to Riverton, where yours had gone by. You just had to swear to the guys that there was Riverton Airport if you were trying to book it. Randy Lehman and Jim Gore, Jim comes to every meeting. I don't know how Jim does it. He is attending every meeting. He's been in Lander with us on our shoplifting. But they, Randy and he came into my office to talk to me about how we could fix the rails for trails, and they got some good ideas, and so I'll present those to staff before I bring them out. Josh Saltzgiver also approached me about some improvements to our soccer fields. He pointed out that with CWC starting up their own soccer program, we'll have to share those upper fields, and so we might need some more soccer fields. We're so centrally located that if we could, if we could do that, we would be able to draw a lot of, a lot of committees or a lot of tournaments into the Riverton area. So, I really appreciate him working hard on that. The DEQ meeting last night, I could go on for a long time, and maybe I ought to, because there's a lot of misinformation out there. Athon is not trying to put in 400 wells. Athon is trying to put in 200 to 250. The outfall of the water is extremely clear. The outfall of water only reaches Boyson in high water tables, which is in April. The model that they used to make their determination on water puts all, every single drop of water that they produce into Boyson, which never happens and never gets down to bad water, except in high water months. And, and there was really good information there, and I appreciate the DEQ. They are an interesting group, and I appreciate the legislators that we work with, Larson and Salzar and Beebout, Miller, they all approached that. Clear back, these conversations go clear back to WHAM when we were in Cheyenne and even before that. And so, Athon is an active company that is in Riverton. They paid last year, they paid $31 million in severance taxes to the state of Wyoming, besides their wages. They had 43 employees. They've cut back to 30-some employees, but we're trying to keep that company working and out there. So, I would appreciate anyone that could go to that website. Tony has the link, if you have time to express that. We took letters from the mayor of DuBois, the mayor of Lander, and I talked with the mayor of Shoshone. He's out of town, and he gave me his approval to use his name in support of that. Tonight, they have another meeting in Thermopolis, and the water quality of Thermopolis is important to us. We do care what the water quality in Thermopolis is, even if they have the hot springs. The mayor Anderson from Shoshone was kind enough to carry all those letters from the mayor's offices again to, to Thermopolis, and Tony was kind enough to send those out not only to Mayor Anderson, but also to the Pro Tem mayor out of Shoshone, who would be in attendance. So, there's, I think I could go on for a little bit longer, because there's lots of things that we're doing. I, I had a merchant give me a present after he attended the shoplifting. He had some hats made, and I'll show those to you one of these days, but he was quite complimentary of the changes and the things that we're doing in Riverton, the hard work that we're doing. I got a phone call from a Riverton resident that I was raised with all my life. He recently moved to Casper today, and it was the same conversation of how well Riverton's doing and how he was pleased with our efforts. And so, I would like to thank all those, especially staff, Chief, for the time you put up with me driving to Lander. Chief will be in this, in this chamber with me tomorrow night. For all the staff, Kyle puts in countless numbers of, of carrying water for the airport, and it's just amazing, the work that he does. Councilmember White on the Lander Council tonight is, is struggling to get her council to fund the airport, and, because it's a lot of money. It's $215,000 out of their budget, and they're just like us. They're struggling all the way. The commissioners are the same way. And so, when you meet up with those guys, shake their hands, tell them that you think, that you appreciate their efforts, tell them that the airport needs their money and that we appreciate everything that's being done. Tony has written numbers of letters for the Manita Divide. I appreciate that effort. So, with that said, I believe we don't have an executive session. I would, the chair would entertain a motion for adjournment of the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Hancock and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any discussion? Seeing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. We stand adjourned at 8:04.